I am, we are, this is Norwood. All right, welcome back to This is Norwood. Today's guest of honor, man of the hour, if you will, is a former longtime zoning board member and chairperson and former Board of Education member, Robert Trapani, or Bob as we like to call him. How are you doing today, Bob?
Very good. Thank you for asking, thank you for having me for this interview.
Certainly. Thank you for having us. Thank you for having me, I should say.
My heart will always be in Norwood.
Yeah, tell me about when you first arrived here with that in mind.
Well, I, yeah, my wife was basically raised in Norwood.
Okay.
So, actually, you know, on our first date, I picked her up from her home on Garnett Place.
Okay, Garnett Place, yes.
Yeah, we went out for dinner and then we stopped off at, I guess it's, what is it called now? Donallo's or it used to be Dino's?
Dino's is now Donatella's in the past year.
That was our first date. We went, it was called the back door then. You could understand why it's a back door because you gotta drive all the way to the back to get in.
Back door into the woods, I think.
That was, which I didn't know, it was our first date. I was never there before, but when I walked in, it was very dark inside and just candles on each table. And I realized then it was a place that people met that didn't want to be seen by others. It was kind of an interesting, we had a drink. I would say after that.
What message were you sending her?
Oh my goodness, so that was kind of interesting, you know?
Oh wow, and that's, I'm jumping ahead many years now, but that's also where you had your going away party when you left the zoning board later on, right?
Yes, it was my, and I felt like I said, I came full circle. As a matter of fact, I said that that night at my dinner party that the mayor and council was so kind to give me. I said, this is like deja vu. It's come full circle for me, Norwood.
That's funny.
Getting to the end and I'm leaving from the same place.
Made a reliable place those years later.
Yeah, so it was kind of like a very coincidental and nostalgic.
A symmetry to it, yeah, I like it. And why did you wind up moving to Norwood after the first date? What year did you wind up moving here?
We moved here in 1974. My wife, matter of fact, when we got married, we got married at macular conception. Because my wife, you know, grew up in Norwood and that was her church. And I'll never forget, as we departed the church after marriage, we got into the limousine and we were going to the Fiesta Restaurant for reception. And on the way, my wife said, I'm so happy, you know, we're married, but you have to promise me one thing. And that is someday you have to promise me we'll move back to Norwood.
Okay.
What do I say, you know, I'm just recently married, you know, I mean, and I knew Norwood, you know, was a little more exclusive, a little more expensive, the homes, you know, so. But what could I say? I said, oh sure, we'll definitely back. But I didn't know, you know, but what do you say to your new wife?
Right, right.
So she always had that on the back burner. And then my in-laws called us up and said, there's a new development going up on Carter Street in Norwood. And she said, the brand new homes, they look great. Why don't you go and take a look at them? So we did. Of course, my wife was all excited about it.
Norwood gods have smiled on her at that point.
Because I knew it was over our budget.
That was it for New Milford at that point?
Yeah, but she, yeah, it was from the Milford, but she always threw it in my face. Remember, you promised me. But I loved the home too, you know, brand new home, whoever thought of that, you know?
Right, right.
So we pulled, you know, my in-laws helped out a little bit. My mother, you know, she was a widow, but she helped out a little bit. So we had just enough for a down payment.
Perfect.
So, and that was the start. That was 1974.
And when did you start getting involved from there with the town?
Yeah, that, right after I moved in to Carter Street, my in-laws who were involved with the Democratic Party at the time, they were very friend, good friends with Mayor Ray McKenna. And so Ray wanted to meet me and welcome me to the town. He knew my wife from, because my wife, as you said, grew up in Norwood.
Right.
So I met Ray at my in-law's home and he welcomed me, such a friendly man and a very distinguished looking man. And don't forget, he told me, get involved in Norwood, Bob, you're gonna love it. But if you just sit back and do nothing, he says, you're gonna resent it, you're not gonna have any feelings about Norwood. The key to have feelings about Norwood, get involved, give back, and the town will give you so much more back in rewards. So I'm going to myself, yeah, yeah, my wife is having her second baby, you know, just about. I had two jobs at the time. I said to myself, how am I gonna ever get involved? I didn't get involved for the first few years, but in 1980, Ted Fisher, who was a guidance counselor in Beckton High School in East Rutherford.
Was he a resident? He was a resident here?
Yeah, he was a resident in Norwood too. He was on the Board of Ed. And he was gonna, his term was up and he wanted to take his place. He said, you have the same background, you'd be great for the Board of Ed, you know all about that. So I said, you know, that might be appealing. My kids are now in the school, et cetera. I'm a guidance counselor. I know a lot about education, so, okay. So I put my hat in the ring to run the Board of Education.
Do you remember names of some of the people you were on with at the time?
Well, I remember it was Sal Ruttigliano.
Okay.
And he was actually the president at the time. I think he still lives in Norwood.
Have to look that one up.
Yeah, I think he still lives in Norwood. And Jim Brown, he was Dr. Jim Brown, he was a doctor of philosophy at Jersey City State College.
Okay.
So he was very involved. And a few others, but I became friends with both of them right away. And so that was nice. It was a nice camaraderie we had. So one of our biggest projects was to hire a new superintendent of schools.
Oh, okay.
So that was, and actually, they appointed me to be the leader of the team to do the interviews, et cetera, and all that.
What'd you do to piss them off?
Yeah, I know. I said, oh boy, you know, and so, yeah. So I did that. And at the same time, I was always going to the farm to always get plants, et cetera, for my new house.
To Derrick Hall Farm?
Derrick Hall Farm.
Okay, okay.
And I got to know Gus Derrick Hall very well. And, you know, just by shopping there. And he said, I'd like to appoint you to the zoning board.
Right.
Chairman of the zoning board at the time.
And to this, you said what?
So I said, Gus, I can't do it. I'm running for the Board of Education. This is 1980. So I said, I can't do it. I'm gonna be, hopefully, a member of the Board of Ed. And he said, well, you can do both. So I said, Gus, that's too much. I can't do both. He says, oh, sure you can. He said, I, he says, I'll check with our attorney, see if you can do both. Who's found out I could do both. And those out there who know Gus Derrick Hall, it's very, very difficult to say no to him. A very strong person, yeah. He has that weight. Just don't say no to the man. So I said, Gus, I don't know anything about the zoning board. But he said, well, listen, you just sit there, review the applications, do your homework, make sure you do your homework. And there's all experienced members on the board. Sit back, learn, and before you know it, you'll get it.
Okay, was he right?
Doing both jobs. I was fortunate enough to be elected to the Board of Education. And I was on the zoning board all at the same time, 1980.
Busy year.
Yeah, so.
So how long were you on the school board, all told?
I was on the school board six years and president for two.
Excellent. And what'd you think about the presidency up there?
Of the Board of Ed?
Right.
You know, I liked it because, you know, one thing about the school and all who sent kids there, you know, it's a small school. Everybody knows each other. I mean, it was so easy to get home, all the teachers and the administrators and the custodial staff, et cetera. It was like another little family town. So it was nice. And it was, you know, obviously, the school was well-run. So there were some issues, of course, like every, every town has in every school, but not major issues. So it was, you know, not a difficult job to be president of the Board of Ed.
Okay, okay. And did you, you just, you didn't run for reelection after a period or just wanted to buy everything to zoning?
Yeah, I did. Three years and then I had to run again three years later.
Okay.
So I was on for two terms, yeah.
Okay.
And.
And what year did you come off? That was eighty, eighty-one?
Eighty-seven. I ran in eighty and I think eighty-one to eighty-seven.
Okay.
The zoning board, I never left. Except for two years when they disbanded the Board of, the Board of Adjustment.
What year was that or approximately?
I was in the nineties. I'm not sure what year it was. It was right around the same time as we approved the Cho-Dai Church.
Okay, okay.
So whatever that year was, we disbanded.
Okay.
Almost immediately after that. And that was a very contentious application.
Okay, and you, when you were reformed, was that under a different mayor, a different council or just it's gotta happen?
Came in.
Okay, okay.
Years later, he was, he got to be mayor. It was a turnover from the Democrats in control to the Republicans in control.
Who was in power before him? That was Derrick Hall and then Kaplan?
Yeah, I guess was the mayor.
Gotcha, okay. Just wanna make sure we have the history clean for everybody.
Mayor Kaplan called me up and said, Bob, I'm reinstating the zoning board and I'd like you to be chairman of it again. So, and it was always, believe it or not, from my hesitancy, big hesitancy to be a member of the zoning board originally, I took a lot of pride in it because I was there for so many years.
You were the old, the elder statesman there. I started watching.
Yeah, so I, I took it as, of course, as a major compliment that Mike Kaplan would want me there again, so.
What do you, just to go back for a second, what do you remember, is there anything in particular you remember about the town when you first moved in? As far as its feel, some of the highlights, the locations?
Well, you know, it was still growing at the time. Like I said, Carter Street was just starting to be built.
Right.
Matter of fact, when I moved in there, it was just bayous swamp land, really. I mean, I remember my kids walking the property and lost their boots in the dirt. They just sunk in. I had to pick them up by my hands, pull them out, and the boots got buried there.
Yikes.
Yeah, so, you know, developments going around town at that point, you know?
Okay, what'd it look like, say during the eighties? What did Livingston Street look like? I know we get to Livingston Street when we talk about the zoning board later, so I'd curious to hear about its start.
You know, Living Street, the street was there, but it was like a very small, not, not a much of a personality downtown Livingston Street.
Okay.
It was there, but you know, you had a few stores there, but nothing that would draw you.
I heard they had a Friendly's and a Carvel at some point, which would be good enough for me, but.
Yeah, they had a Friendly's there, which was a place in a Carvel, of course. Nuffy Savino, who's still in town, he, he owned that. And I was a coach of the girls softball, so after every game, we went to Carvel to buy, buy ice cream cones.
I would join girls softball to do that. Any reason to get there was always good with me growing up, but.
Yeah.
I hope the Friendly's was better than the one in my town though, because we, I went there twice in high school. I grew up on Long Island and we, we walked out of there twice because the waiters forgot about us, so.
Oh, no. Yeah, it was really good. You know, Friendly's made the best ice cream sundaes, the best.
Tribbles, right?
Yeah, the best. And then Nuffy was, I got to know him well because I kept going to Carvel's with the team. And he started the Optimist Club of Norwood.
What's that?
That's to do things for Norwood, projects, et cetera, fundraisers, and come up with some donations we'd like to give to some good projects that were going on.
Okay.
I got involved with him with the start of that, you know, one of the original charter members of that.
Okay, is that still, when did that, when did that club wind down? I hadn't heard about that since I moved in.
Yeah, I don't think that's around for a long time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's around for a long time, as far as I know.
Okay.
But that was from Nuffy Savino, who's one of the founders of that.
Okay, what would your daughter do like?
Yeah.
What would like your daughter and her friends and stuff do when they were going out in like middle school, high school around town here?
No, that's the thing. They'd always say, there's nothing to do, there's nothing to do, you know? Same thing they probably say today though, too, you know?
I'll find out soon. The older one's nine, too.
Guidance counselor in Emerson all those years and all the kids used to say the same thing to me, nothing to do on Emerson. You know, small towns.
That probably means drive to the city when they're driving age.
But the nice thing about that was all the kids would play on the streets then.
Okay, okay.
You know, and that was a big thing in those days, you know, of course, they had girls, they'd be jump roping, hopscotch, things like, you don't see that much anymore. Kids playing on the streets.
Maybe some, maybe some ball and stuff, but yeah.
You know, you know, it's kind of like not the thing anymore. But that was nice, you know? We stopped block parties.
Block parties on Carter Street?
Yeah, we used to.
That's nice, yeah. The only one, the only one I ever hear about these days is on John Circle, so there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that, that one they still seek approval for every year. I haven't heard about, I didn't hear about too many others while I was on the council, so.
Yeah, we used to have shirts. We used to have shirts where every year, Carter Street Block Party.
You still have any of those in your possessions?
I don't think I have that shirt anymore, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, but what you were, jumping back into zoning, so you were on how long, all told, about?
Well, eighty-one till 2020.
Wow, so.
Years, except for those two years where it was disbanded.
Okay, tell me about some highlights from your time on the zoning board.
Well, there's never highlights because.
No lights, however.
Because every time, you know, it is, is that the, the small project you have all the time, you know, someone wants to add a desk, a deck or a room or a patio, et cetera, et cetera, you know? Those are easy. It's the big projects that cause the town to be split. You know, and it's very frustrating because you get pressure, like, you know, it's a small town from both sides. You gotta vote this way, you gotta vote that way, you know?
Right, right.
You know, it's just human nature, you know, because it's a small town, people know you. And so every time I walk down the street, Mom, are you gonna vote on this or that, you know? But as long as you vote what you believe is right for the town, it's so hard sometimes to go against your friends.
Right.
That's the biggest part of all, you know, because I'm always afraid, hey, I'm gonna lose them as friends. And I did lose a few as friends over the years.
Yikes, should I be worried since I'm coming on tonight? Should I be worried since I'm being sworn in tonight?
That's right, good luck. No, no, hopefully you wouldn't have as many controversial cases, but anyway, I always tried what I believed was best for the town, you know, and it killed me sometimes because I wanted to vote one way, but I couldn't.
Well, one of the big ones I remember is living, I guess, the redoing of Livingston Street, the cost cutters site. How did that get started? Like, how did that become an issue?
Well, it was, well, obviously, because it was such a huge project, it would really change, you might say, the face of downtown Norwood.
Right, so I just came to you with the idea, the board, so I came to the board and said, this is a mess, we're redoing it?
Came to us with, and that project, yeah, it was, and especially, it was actually what a lot of towns were, were facing at that time, were stores on the bottom and apartments on the top.
Right.
This was a new concept that was developing all over Burton County at the time.
Right.
And I remember, you know, as I said, I was a guidance counselor in Emerson for many years and they were doing the same thing, basically. And they're still going through that whole thing, if you go through Kindercomack Road.
Yep, I was gonna say, I have noticed that over there in some drags, yep.
But they're not moving as fast as Norwood. And I say as fast because how long has Norwood been going through this, like for fifteen years?
Has it been fifteen years? Wow, I know.
And it's still not done.
Nope, it's looking decent, but it's not done. I mean, I remember.
Not done at all yet.
I came here in two thousand, June 2011, and at the time, you know, the sign was crooked. I mean, the store, the older stores were there, but you know, there, it was clearly a little dilapidated versus probably its best times, so.
It is. And there were so many issues with that, because you have apartments above, is that gonna have an impact on the schools? And then you have to deal with traffic in all those stores and apartments above, egress, ingress, neighbors behind the stores.
Right, I know there's a concern about the, whether or not there should be restaurants there because of neighboring yards might get the unfortunate bargain of wildlife and smells.
Exactly, and cleaners. Do we have cleaners with their fumes and?
Cleaners too, I didn't even think of that one, yep.
Chemicals. So there were a lot of issues and, you know, it was a full house for a long time.
That's, I jumped in right around then, if you recall, it was that, that discussion on the one hand, and then the other one I wanted to ask you about was Derrick Hall Farms. How did that become an issue?
Well, it became an issue because it was, it was zoned for single-family homes.
Right.
And it was zoned for homes seventy-five by a hundred property. But the problem was, is that the application was for townhouses.
Right, I remember that.
So that would have brought in a lot more people.
Right.
You know, obviously than single-family homes. And again, you have studies on traffic, et cetera, the impact on schools.
I'm gonna ask you that, right, yeah.
Sure. So there was so much to it. And they were, you know, even with townhouses, if it was zoned for townhouses, it was still way over the limit for the number of townhouses that would have been allowed.
Right, I heard that whole discussion too.
I think you could have had like twenty-one downhouses over there, then they wanted, like, I forget the exact number, but.
There was forty-something wanted at some point.
Forty-something, then they cut it down to thirty-seven or something like that. So it was still way over.
Right, right. I look at the houses that are there now and I still can't imagine how they originally, they wanted forty-something facilities, like places there. It just didn't, doesn't make sense in retrospect.
They did a variance for the front, so it was close to Tappan Road, too.
Yep, yep.
So it was, again, so controversial because, you know, you care about the people that wanted it.
Right.
The townhouses, you cared about the people that wanted for single-family homes and the reasons they gave for that. So, you know, the board was torn. Matter of fact, it was a four-three vote.
Oh wow. And I was gonna ask you about that. Um, why did, why didn't it just stay a farm? How did that, how did it even turn into a residential discussion? Bring us back one step further, if you could recall.
Well, it's just that the Derrick's wanted to sell.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they wanted to sell. I guess they had enough. They've been there for, I don't know, many, many, many years. So, you know, and I think stores like Lowe's, et cetera, hurt them a lot, too.
Right, I could see that, because they're selling trees and plants and everything, right?
Yeah, so I think it just wasn't financially worth keeping anymore.
Okay, and at that time, was it, was it zoned for houses at that time or did it have to get rezoned from what it was being used for before it even got to the discussion on number of properties?
No, as a matter of fact, once the zoning board denied the townhouses, they went immediately to the planning board for single-family homes because they had another offer.
What, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, it went to the planning board for single-family homes because they didn't need a variance for that, because it was zoned for single-family homes.
What year did that discussion start? About 2012, 2013?
Probably in there.
Okay, because I remember it was after I was here and after I started paying attention. I just wasn't sure. Okay, okay.
So that was obviously, that went on for many, many, many months.
I think over a year, if I recall.
Probably over a year, yeah.
Now, both that and Livingston obviously stand out on my mind. Are those the two where if you're, if somebody said to you one day, write a, write a history of the Norwood Zoning Board, would those be like the two highlights you'd put on there?
Right, those are two right up there with the Cho-Dai Church, because that was very contentious, too.
Is that a location? That's kind of an interesting location.
Yeah, and that's why I voted for the Cho-Dai Church amongst other reasons, but it wasn't as visible and I didn't think it would have that much of an impact from where it was located.
Big traffic concern, I imagine, on, on the weekends and things like that?
Right, and they were gonna have their own, their own people there directing traffic. They were gonna hire their own
Okay, okay.
Special police to do that, and they would pay for that.
Okay.
So, but that was again, a very contentious vote, but it wasn't as impactful to Norwood as it was to.
What about, what was I gonna say? Who were some of the people you remember working with during your forty years on zoning? Who stands out in retrospect?
Yeah, well, Jimmy Mazo was there.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike Casey was there a long time. He just came off.
He just came down. How long was he on?
Mike Casey was on there maybe twenty-five years, I'm just saying, twenty-five years, yeah. He was there a long time. Some of the other people, I can't remember their names now, it's so long ago, because there was a big change. People just kept coming and going for a long time.
You put an end to that.
That's how I think I got to become chairman. Before you knew it, I was the senior member.
Wow. How long were you chairman, all told? I think it was the whole time I was here for the most, I've been here.
At least twenty-five years.
Okay, and you got renominated every year? Was it every two years?
Just about every year after I became chairman.
Okay, okay.
And that was something that I had so much trepidation about because when I first came on, I knew very little about zoning board.
Learn on the job there.
Learn on a job. You read, you read the rules, regulations, you know, the zoning laws. Talk to the building inspector, you know?
Did you ever make, did you ever consider a council run? I think I may have asked you that. I don't remember the answer was back.
No, I never did. I was asked to do that, but, yeah, I enjoyed, believe it or not, I never thought I would say when I first came on the zoning board. Because like I said, I felt like a fish out of water. But I really enjoyed that and I just stayed with that.
Okay. That gives me hope I'll have the same feeling when I, when I join tonight.
Yeah, it's very rewarding, you know, and, you know, for anybody that watches this, they should really try and get involved in the town because it is from way back when Mayor McKenna told me to get involved and get back, because the town gives you back so much more. And it's true. So it was a lesson that I sloughed off when he first told me, because I thought I was so busy, you know, with two jobs and a little baby. But the best thing I ever did.
What's, what's something memorable you remember as far as Norwood events or what have you from your time living in town?
Well, you know, I used to get a kick out of being the softball coach.
Okay.
Yeah, I enjoyed that a lot. And the, and the town grew up, we kept getting more and more teams. This was girls, because I only had girls. But I was a baseball coach at the high school in Emerson for ten years, so I knew baseball, you know, so I knew sports, so. And I enjoyed seeing so many girls keep coming out. And more and more each year, more girls came out. And before you know it, we had quite a few teams, so that was a lot of fun. And the parties we had at the end of the year and the camaraderie. And before you know it, we had quite a few teams, so that was a lot of fun and the parties we had at the end of the year and the camaraderie.
Those be?
That was a nice thing to see.
Was there a usual location for the parties?
Um, just on the field.
Okay. That's fair.
Barbecues out there.
Speaking of the field, random question for you, but Kennedy Field, what's the history there? Was it, did I hear whether it was originally a dumping ground or they had to redo it at some point in history? Is that before you were here? I'm not sure if that's something you would know either way, but have you heard anything like that?
It wasn't a field like it is now. It grew, you know, it spread out a lot more, but uh, there was a field there. There was always a field there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I might, I might be remembering something different.
Yeah, that's what I remember, always been there.
Okay.
But that was special to me as well, the girls softball and see how it grew. And the Falk and Sterns were very big in that, too, to help it grow.
Right, as I mentioned, I interviewed two of them, so it sounds like there's a lot more than two. I'll have to send you that video also.
How true.
But what, what's the, what's the best store or restaurant that's no longer in town that was here when you were here?
Oh, boy, I'm trying to remember.
And when was it here, I should say?
Yeah. You know what was a very good restaurant was Silvio's.
What, where was that located?
That's the one on Piermont Road now. It's still a restaurant.
Oh, Demora.
Yeah, it's still there. And that was Silvio's, but that was always an excellent Italian restaurant.
Still is.
Yeah, yeah, and it was always a little bit contentious because of where it's located, you know, in a residential area.
Right, right.
Of course, they came back a number of times for zoning approval because they wanted to expand.
Well, more recently they're building up or more seating or outdoor, right, right.
You know, a problem because residents didn't want it, you know, they didn't want outside dining, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. Yeah, I can understand that. I actually have heard that at some point in time, there's restaurants onto Pan Road, which I think right near.
Oh, it's now in Piermont, right on the corner. Oh, gosh.
Oh, the, I know what you're talking about. I've been meaning to try it for about five years. Actually, the whole time I've been here, it just hasn't happened yet. So that restaurant used to be here in town.
I can't think of the name of it right now. Not Cormax, Cormax was a big one too in town.
Where was that located?
Ares.
What's that? Okay, right, right.
Very big restaurant, too. And yeah, those were some of the highlighted ones, but the one on Pan Road, we always went to after our zoning board meetings. We had a little camaraderie there, about three or four of us would always go there and it was nice.
Was it Il Portico or something else at the time? Il Portico is, what's, what's at the end now? That's why I ask.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I can't think of the name of it right now. Oh, gosh. I can't think of the name of it, but it's, your two brothers owned it.
Okay.
They moved to Piermont and they're right on the main, where all the shops are in Piermont.
Oh, on, on Piermont, I'm probably thinking of someplace entirely.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, I got you. Briefly, tell me about the different, if you remember, tell me about the different administrations in town, going from McKenna to Derrick Hall, more recently to Jim Barses.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, all the mayor stayed a while. I mean.
They did, they have, except for.
He had a long tenure. And Gus stayed many, many years, I think four terms. I think he was there sixteen or twenty years.
Sounds right, yep.
And then Kaplan came, but he didn't stay as long because he was appointed a judge.
Right, he's bankruptcy judge in Trenton now, I believe.
Yeah, so he had a nice appointment there, so he had to resign from the mayorship. And then Jim came, of course, he's been here for a while now.
Yep, yep. Do you remember anything in particular about the, about the various administrations? Like, what, what stands out when you think of all four of those since you've been here?
Well, you know, when Gus was there, it was just about all Democratic. He was a Democratic mayor and council, very strong mayor and council. So, things went usually one way. It was all Democratic.
What sort of projects were undertaken during his, his reign?
You know, I don't, since I wasn't there, I don't remember any major things going, but I.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
What do you, was I gonna ask you? What, what do you miss now? You moved out in what, twenty twenty?
Yeah, December, the end of December of twenty twenty. Just before Christmas, just before Christmas.
Oh, this year? You, you just moved down full time, okay.
Now I'm here one year in the South Jersey.
Okay, okay. What do you miss?
I miss, actually, I miss, A, the involvement. And number two, seeing some of my dear friends up there. But I, I would have come a lot more, but with COVID.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can't get there, but before COVID, you know, the first two months, I was staying at the Residence Inn over there in Orangeburg. So I saw, you know, a lot of people from Norwood that I wanted to see.
Oh, that's good.
Nice. So I'll be back.
Excellent. What time are you in now?
I live in Galloway Township. It's nine miles north of Atlantic City.
Have you sniffed out the zoning board yet?
No, no. You know, here, it's, it's, it's very big. Galloway Township covers a lot of area.
Yeah.
And it's so different from, from, say, Norwood. And there's no little town, so to speak. Like every road, you go fifty miles an hour, you know, there's no little towns that you go through. You know, it's not like that.
Okay.
It's more spread out, so it's a little different, a lot more laid back.
Okay, yeah, farther you get from New York City, probably.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. People are very kind at the supermarkets. They want to help you take out, you know, your bags to their car, you know, do you need help? They take their time. Some people get annoyed. They take their time talking to each customer going through the line.
Speed this up.
Right, it's a different mentality.
Right, right. So, speaking of which, this, gonna be a good final question. The supermarket, was it? I've heard discussions over the years of supermarkets coming in and out of town or being discussed here in Norwood. Was there ever one here and do you expect one will come with this new development on Livingston?
Well, it's made for a supermarket. I think they could have a great supermarket there.
Good enough space, yeah.
Yeah, if they have something, you know, there were rumors there's gonna be a Trader Joe's, that it was gonna be a specialty Italian type of supermarket.
Carrados or something?
Yeah, one of those type and, but nothing ever panned out yet. So, we're hoping that something goes there, you know, just for all those stores over there, you know, because it's a it's a hub.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
What's that?
No, By State Plaza is frequently frequented over there. That's what you're talking about, right, over there?
Uh, oh, yeah, that one has one now. I'm wondering if Norwood cuts off some folks by putting in one on Livingston Street at some point.
Oh, you mean, that I don't know. You mean a big supermarket there?
Right, right, by the old cost cutter site.
Ah, I doubt that's gonna happen there.
Okay, okay.
Doubt it'll happen there, yeah, because they have to go all through the zoning process again.
Hey, I'm ready for it. Got my corner man right here.
Oh, gosh, yeah. I wish you good luck with that, Paul. You're gonna be a great member because I know you've been coming to our meetings for so long and you have a good feel of it.
Uh, thank you. I'm taking inventory and watching the old masters, so.
No, no, you have a big advantage because like I said, when I was first appointed, I had no idea what I was getting involved with.
Time will tell if I do, but.
Oh, you will, yeah. And you're the council, you're perfect.
Thank you, thank you.
Couldn't have hired a bigger person to do this job, yeah.
Uh, thank you. Your lips to God's ears, we'll see.
I mean it sincerely, yeah.
So, oh, that's the final thing I wanted to ask you about the church. So you've been, you've been there. You went to the same church the entire time you were town, because I remember I saw you there once or twice when I was there and you were doing usher work.
Right.
How long did you do that?
Uh, nine, I was an usher from nineteen ninety through two thousand twenty, so thirty.
Okay.
Three years I was an usher at Macиль Conception, yeah.
What do you remember about the congregation there? What's your fondest takeaway from Macиль Conception?
Well, like I said, I was married there. My daughter was married there. And then, being a small church like it is, you get to know the people and for being an usher for thirty years, believe it or not, you see families come and go. You see new generations come.
Right.
And it's, you know, it's amazing the way you look at little kids, you know, tiny kids and then you know how they grow up. You can't believe before your eyes because kids are the best parameter of time.
They are. That's the only reason I feel old right now.
And here I am seeing other generations coming back, you know, so, you know, it's very special to me, yeah.
Excellent. Well, with that, I'll, I'll let you go. I know both of us have to run shortly, but I thank you for taking some time. Like I said, when I first conceived of this, you were, you were one of the first people on my mind for this project, so.
Oh, that's so nice of you, Paul. Then you're gonna be great with Norwood, too. Thank you for getting involved so much. Like I told you from.
Thank you for getting involved so much. I'm just getting started versus you.
I know, but you know, from Ray McKenna's mouth to my mouth to your mouth, you're gonna love it.
Thank you, thank you.
And it'll be an asset.
And I'll, I'll use that as a message to everyone else who's thinking about getting involved after listening to this, you know, listening to this series.
Oh, no, I mean it from the heart.
Thank you, thank you. And thanks again. And you're willing to come back if anyone has any more questions, once they?
Call me anytime. That's, my heart is in Norwood.
Beautiful. Thanks again. We'll, we'll see you soon.